All right. Hello, everyone, and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley. Today, we are joined by our founders of Get Oiling, Amanda and Greg Kilwin. Y'all say hello.
Hey, everybody. We're glad you're here.
Hi, everyone. Glad you're here and excited to get rolling.
Definitely. So today, as you saw in the emails that we sent out prior to this live session, we are going to be talking about one cool tool that you might not know about, that you can use to get your new members or people who are, you know, just members who aren't interested in sharing yet, sharing easily. One of the things that really kind of keeps people from getting started sharing is that they think that it's really complicated, that they have to know everything about everything. And when it comes to actually utilizing a tool to help them share, outside of, of course, you know, demonstrating with products in front of people, they think that they have to like jump through a bunch of technical hoops to get it done. So we're going to show you how in, I think, really, I mean, I said less than five minutes in the email. I think that this actually comes together in probably half that time technically. We're going to show you how you can create this tool for anyone in your organization to share easily and share some strategies with you around how you can maximize it to make sharing easy for your team. So as you're coming in, go ahead and come over in the chat. Let us know, you know, where you're coming in from. I see Floyd is in the DC area. It's raining here in New York City, too. Not a great look for Halloween, unfortunately. If you are here today and you would like live help, if you would like some hands-on assistance, do go ahead over to the Q and A section, leave your questions there, and we have all kinds of space and time dedicated to helping you after we go through this initial bit of training. So awesome. Thank you, guys, again, all for being here. Oh, there we go. It's fall, y'all. 80 degrees in St. Augustine, Florida. I gotta say, Shelley, a little jealous, just a little bit.
Yeah, maybe we need to go visit her.
I know, right?
Sher, are you ready for some breaths?
There we go. She says yes. Fabulous. How cold is it up there in Fargo, guys?
It's been freezing. So like it was, I think, 20 something this morning. 28 as a low to last night, so. It's up to 41 today, you know, so it's that 20-degree difference from morning till afternoon is kind of funny.
Right. Yeah, where I'm from, that would be a record low. Wow. All right. Oh, wow. Well, negative 10 degrees this morning. Wow.
Wow.
My goodness. Wow, that's amazing. All right. Well, weather aside, let's start talking about, again, get those questions in. If you want help with something, anything, no question is too big or small. Put it in the Q and A and we can help you out. Greg, let's show what this looks like and talk about this amazing feature you created in Get Oiling.
Yeah, let's talk about it here. So I'm going to share out my screen here. Let me see. Do you see it now? Should be seeing the dashboard. Cool. So what we're talking about today is the Leg Builder Links. We do not talk about them a whole lot, but they're super powerful and they're a great way to get your team sharing. So what they are generally, I mean, they are a number of different things, but one of the main purposes is for new business builders on your team or those that, you know, may have been around a little while and would you like to give them a boost in terms, if they don't have their own system, like a website system or any way to share online. Now, what it does, it allows them, or allows you to give each of your team members, and the number of links that you can create depends on your plan. It allows you to give your team members a special link to your website. Now, it looks like your website, acts like your website's got your picture on there and whatever else that you choose to put on there, but it has their member number when they go to click on the place an order button or any of the product links that are on the page as well. Now, there are ways to customize the story section to take advantage of this, and that's something that I'll show you as well. But so the Leg Builder Links, just to show you where those are at in the menu here, down on this side underneath my site, there's a Leg Builder section. There's really two components to it. I'll be covering the Leg Builder Links mostly, then I'll just touch on the settings here towards the end, since that's related, but also a very nice feature, too. So the Leg Builder Links, these let you create a link for somebody. So let's say that we have a, we've got a new builder on your team. And one of the common things that we've heard and we've experienced ourselves is you have a new business builder and they're super excited, they're on fire, they're absolutely on fire for sharing and growing their business. They're still getting used to the PV requirements, for example, of being a distributor. And so they, they kind of are a little concerned about also adding on the cost of marketing tools. Now, this link is free to them. You can provide it to them. So it's a great way to get them sharing. They have their own link. It's got the product, same product information that you would have on your website. And it gets them going without, you know, and they can, they can tell them, you know, when they share this on Facebook or wherever, they can, the story that usually goes with it is like, hey, you know, I'm just getting excited or just getting started. I'm super excited about this. My upline has given me this special link so that if you buy through here, I'll get credit for it. So how this works, when you create a new link, you can just give them a, optionally give them a name, you know, so you can keep track of it. This name doesn't show up anywhere. So you can keep track of it. The important parts are the member numbers over here. And because, you know, if you leave the, as it says here, if you leave it blank, it'll use your number. So if you want to split, for example, the enroller or sponsor, you can do that. Or most people will just put in your, the member number of that other person. So let's say we've got my new builder. So what I'll do is something like this and get in their enroller or their member number in both the enroller and sponsor boxes. And then you can choose what the path is going to be. Now, this little part here is my little test site. But this would be your URL, your domain name. If you have a custom domain name, it would be that. But so basically, it's whatever your website address is for and then whatever you want to put on here. So you could have, for example, like in this case, I'll just say my new builder, something like that. And now that would be your link. In this case, it's my website address for my new builder. And you could put their name in there. It could be short and sweet, just to keep it, keep it simple. And you can customize it, too, in a few different ways here. If they're not in the same country that you are and you can choose one of these, it'll automatically choose the appropriate website theme to go with it. So, you know, we have the product themes for these top four countries, as well as a couple of others down the list. If you choose any of the other countries, the Young Living signup link will still be the same. It'll work correctly. It'll, you know, correctly choose, you know, Argentina or whatever. I don't know if there's too many people in Antarctica. That's interesting. But it'll correctly choose their country through that and then choose the appropriate website theme. Now, if you also choose a country that has a built-in Get Oiling theme, you can choose from those themes. There are some notes down here about which themes are supported on what, and with what countries. You can also pick a landing page to go with it. So if you, if your main website is something different, let's say you've got makeup on your main website and you want your builder to have a body systems link, you could choose a landing page that maybe goes with that specific land or that specific theme. When you're all done, you can hit create and you'll end up with a link. And I'll look for the my new builder link. It's right here. And edit is if you want to edit it, you can view it if you want to test it out, and then you can share it, social media or grab the link. Typically, we just say like click on view, check it out, make sure it works. You can click, click through to see it and where it's going. I think I put in what, 123? Yeah, 123 for the, for the address. And so you can see it's basically your website. Oh, this isn't your website. This is my silly website, but it's got some things on here, but it's basically your same website that you're going to see. But for those, like the place an order link, for example, I don't know if you can see this in the very bottom left, but it has the sponsor ID and an enroller ID of the 123 in there that I had placed in there. So it does follow through to the signup links, which makes the Leg Builder Links super useful in that regard. Now, the strategy that goes with this typically, if you have a number of builders, then you can create a link for each of them. And this plan, this specific plan, I think this one is, this test account is on a premium plan. This allows you to create as many Leg Builder Links as you want to. I think the basic plan has a limit. I think it's 10, if I remember right. So anyway, you can kind of, based on your plan level, you can create a certain number of links. And now some people, what they have done to go with this, you know, because sometimes they're like, well, this doesn't have my builder on there anywhere. It just says my picture. You can actually, in the my story area of your website, you know, clicking over here on my story and photo, where I've got this lovely donut photo, you can actually customize it and put in the story text. You can actually load up anything that you want to, any photos. So let me show you what this looks like on our real customer site who has done this. If you scroll down to the section, they just put in the photo of their person. They even have like a signup link for each of those people, a little story about each one of them. So you can effectively create a team site this way. And each one of those can either be a direct link to the Young Living signup page or to their Leg Builder page, whatever you want to do. So that way, you know, if somebody uses a Leg Builder Link page, it'll take them here. They'll see their face on there and then they know that they're on the right site. So you can kind of coordinate the two, or you don't have to. So that's just one example. I think there's another, another site here that has this same strategy where there's a number of team members who are kind of listed out here. This is a little simpler format, just sort of photo and name. Anyway, you kind of get the idea there. And so that's a great way to get that, you know, the Leg Builder Links to get your builders off to a start until they've got a business that's big enough on their own to invest in a tool like Get Oiling to help grow their business. Now, the Leg Builder Links actually, and so here's an interesting thing. You can see the activity here as well. If you click this little button, you can see which page was used and when. So you can see like, you know, this person's using it. It is, yeah, it's awesome for tracking. You can come in here and see like I showed that link and they, five people have clicked on it. So you can see that there is activity going on, that your builders are doing these things. So that's great. Now, the Leg Builder Links can actually be used for other purposes, too, if you want to. Like if you, let's say, you know, I know there's, let's say you're using one of the built-in website themes for the main part of your website. You don't, you could create a Leg Builder Link that's actually directly to another theme. You don't have to have it for somebody else. If you notice, like when I was creating the link, or actually just go back to edit this new one I made, you don't actually have to fill out enroller name or, or any of these top four fields here, the enroller name or number, or the sponsor name or number. If you leave all those blank, that'll, it'll put it to yours. And then what you could do, let's say you want this for, let's say you have a, you live in the United States and you have somebody in Canada who's interested. You could make the link path, maybe something like Canada, choose the country, Canada. Yeah, requiring to pick a different theme in Canada. So I think Basic Oils, for example, is one of those. But so now, if I would go ahead and, well, actually, I'd have to, to be fully accurate, have to do this and delete it or delete these four fields so that, you know, it goes back to me. But now, if I would save this, I would have a Leg Builder Link that directly pulls up the Canadian theme. So that works for the countries or just even the website themes. Like if you just want to have one, let's say you don't have any people that are interested in Canada, but you live in the United States, you could still have a Leg Builder Link that would, you know, be for makeup for each of these themes. You could, if you really wanted to, have a link for each one of these. Set that up. It's simple and easy to share for people and even coordinate it with a different landing page. So that way, you can keep your main website for the visitors that come across it that way, to be one way. And let's say you hold a class that's about something. Let's say it's about the makeup. So let's say you hold a makeup class. You can give them, your class attendees, this link for the makeup. In this case, maybe we'd say something like makeup instead of the Canada there, of course. But then they have a nice link that goes right to the makeup theme. So that is, yeah, I mean, there are ways. There's a built-in sharing here, too, if you want to drop it or quickly plop it onto these different, different social sites for you, too. So I mean, you could actually promote for your builder, too, if you wanted to. So those are the actual links. Now, you know, those links are, like, they're independent links. And if you view one here, let me go back over here. You can see it does have that, you know, four and then whatever path that you choose there for my new builder. There is another way, so this Leg Builder Settings, which is, I mentioned that earlier. Now, what this is, this is different from the links. Now, this will, these are actually settings for your main website. If you choose to, you can have, you know, when people just go to your website without actually visiting a Leg Builder Link, you can choose to have different sponsor or enroller numbers right on your main website. So if you're building a specific leg, you can direct it there. It's, it's great for that. You can just leave it blank, as it says here. Leave it blank to use your own member number. And then that's by default, it will just use your member number, but you can always go in there and modify that as needed. So I think hopefully that if you have any questions, certainly let me know. I think that covers the gist of it. I mean, it might have gone over five minutes in describing it, but it's certainly shorter than that to set up, I think.
So Gwen had a question, a good one. Why would you do a Leg Builder Link, and this would be for your own account, versus a landing page for different themes? I think that, and Greg, I'd love for you to expand on this, but I think that, Gwen, I think the short answer is, is that for each of our website themes that are pre-made, they are dynamic and they are big and beautiful and fully filled out. And when you have, when you select your website theme, that is your website theme. And so this affords you a way, and correct me if I'm wrong, Greg, this affords you a way to utilize all of the different beautiful and interesting and, you know, informative website themes that we have without having to go in and completely change your website, right? So if you wanted to have targeted sharing around, you know, babies and kids or pets or makeup, you wouldn't have to change your site theme. You could just take this one thing and take advantage of what Greg has already built for you.
Yeah, that's right. So the Leg Builder Link does let you, and I'll go back here briefly. It does let you choose the landing page and the website theme that it goes to. Normally, when you create a landing page, if you, I'll just pull up one of these, for example, under page settings, there's a redirect your visitor to my website. I mean, so what you can, if you have that, this follows the theme that's under your customize my site section. So like the main website theme, but the Leg Builder Link then lets you choose a different theme that they would go to after registration. So it kind of lets you combo the two. So hopefully that helps.
And you could also, you could choose to just have those Leg Builder Links available for people to just land on and peruse without having to enter their name and information. So again, like almost like a business card, if you're chatting with someone about makeup in the grocery line, you can send them the Leg Builder Link of your own that is makeup themed, without you having to think, oh, I gotta change my website or, you know, come up with the whole thing, build a funnel, whatever. You can literally just have a Leg Builder Link that links to that theme that's shareable right away and done for you. We should also note in the comments, Shermah has given a link to one of her downline recently and she has a new distributor.
That is awesome.
This thing works and congratulations on the growth of your team.
That is awesome.
Okay, and then, yes, Shelley also here. She says, okay, wait, I just had a distraction here. Did I just understand that you can create a subsite that you can promote aside from using it for one of your builders, like my number and so on? And I can send that out to prospects in another country? Yes.
Yeah.
You can definitely do that, which, you know, just like Ashley was saying is that especially for people in other countries, it just automatically gives you the ability to have a website that is specific for that and being compliant, because there's such drastic change, or not drastic, but a difference in compliance between us and Canada. So you want to definitely be able to be compliant when you are sharing with Canada. And then, you know, they have their, what is that called, Greg? Ashley?
Oh, the natural health products, for example?
Yes. Yep. You know, so the Canadian sites on, with our web theme, excuse me, already have that built in as well, which is fantastic. So.
And they link off to the product lines for that market as well. Right? So if you are based in the US and you select the US Body Systems theme, but you know that you are, you know, maybe traveling to another country or you've got contacts who are, you know, to use the Canada example, you can create a Canada-themed site that will work exactly the same as your site without having to go in and completely overhaul your theme or change it. And it's, again, it's all these, the same type of information there. The extent of the information is still the same, the fact that it links off to whatever member number you want to be building under, the enroller number you want to be building under, and then goes off to those relevant products in those markets described compliantly. Yep, work's all done for you.
Yep. Yeah, as you can see here, I got the two tabs open. This is the, well, this is actually a Leg Builder Link for the US, but you can see the US products here. This is that Body Systems theme. If you click on these, I believe, or you can probably see the link in the corner. It's the US, where it says US products. So if I come back over here to the Canadian Leg Builder Link now, I click on Frankincense here. You'll see that this will take me to the Canadian website as opposed to the US one. So yeah, it does work like that. It's very cool. It's a great way to have themes all over. And we do have a, you know, your visitors can actually choose this right up here. There are, you know, they can pop back and forth between the different themes, but you know, sometimes it's easier to give them a link than it is to just say, well, go to the little flag and click on this thing and whatever. This will take them right there. And for all the other places that we don't support, there is a global theme. Now, what this does, it has the products on there, but it covers Young Living in particular, but basically the background and all that. So, yeah. Cool.
Awesome. You guys got any questions? How many of you are so excited to go put this to use? Not just to get your team sharing, get your new members sharing, but to make your life easier when you just want to send somebody some information about makeup or pet care or personal care or thieves or, you know, whatever it might be? How much easier is this going to make your life? Shelley says this is a game changer. Love it, love it, love it. All right. Cynthia asks, what would you use for Mexico, global or US?
I think it'd be, I mean, Mexico has its own regulations. I would say global. That's pretty, pretty generic. It just basically goes over Young Living, the company, and presents a couple of their videos.
Awesome. Okay. Very cool. Great questions. All right. Fantastic. Well, do you guys have any, is anyone here today that wants some specific help? Are you struggling with something in your business? Anything that we can do to help you get your, your business rolling more effectively? We are here for Q and A through the end of the call today. Shelley, I believe Philippines is going to be under global as well. Would you say that's right or do we have? Oh, there we go.
Yeah, this, the list of countries, I believe, this comes right from the signup page, I think, on Young Living. But yeah, Philippines is in here somewhere and then, yeah, that'll take them to the global theme. But it definitely does, like when they click on the signup, any of these signup links, the place an order, it'll pass along that country. So it'll at least choose the right country, even if it doesn't have, you know, our full-blown theme. It's got the global one, which gives them some info on there. So, and you can actually, I mean, this is, this is interesting. I mean, this doesn't vary based on theme by any means, but you can, you know, if you're primarily outside of the, or the countries that we support and you have the global theme, I mean, you could build your own site. Another option for you is if you're on, I think it's the premium plan allows this, but under the customize my site link, this is probably not super well-known, but there's this advanced settings link down here that let you, lets you add a custom section to your site. So that would appear on the global theme if you wanted to add something in addition to what's already on there. You can see that on this demo site. If I scroll up, you can see my beautiful testing 123 right here. But it shows up right in that, in that area. So that, that can be helpful if you've got the global theme. Yeah. Any questions?
Shermah says, even though I have been using it, I got some awesome new ideas today.
Cool. Great to hear.
Cynthia has a vendor event this weekend. Good luck to you. She hasn't watched the vendor video yet, but she needs to know what to watch to understand kiosk mode. We can actually show you that really quick right here. For those of you who don't know, this is a feature that if you are at a live event of any kind, vendor event, class, local class, something to that effect, and you want to capture their information so that you could send them a newsletter or, you know, PDF infographic, whatever, then you want to have it in kiosk mode so that it just refreshes back to the landing page. So we're going to show you how to do that.
I am muted. How about that?
There you are.
Cool. Yeah, so normally landing page is the way that they work. You create a landing page and then you tell it where it should go after they've registered. So let's say you've got a download, free download or something. So they'll type in their information, their name and email address. They'll get the, or they'll be sent to the download page. Or maybe it's a video or maybe it's your member area or whatever. There's a bunch of different places you can send people after they register. Kiosk mode is great for these events and it's available on any of the landing pages. You know, clicking on landing pages in the menu, you have, excuse me, you can do it on a custom landing page. You can also do it on a built-in landing page if you want. Typically, we recommend at a vendor event to have a custom landing page, because usually it goes with, you know, maybe a free giveaway or something that people are, that you're giving, like, you know, register for this, to win this gift basket, for example. Usually, the challenge with these vendor events is you'll have a sheet of paper there. A lot of people will sign up, but then afterwards, you're left with a ton of people that you're, or a ton of names that you have to go through and retype somewhere. And of course, can't read the handwriting on a lot of them. So this eliminates that possibility or that step, I should say, of your vendor events. It's a great time saver in that regard. It goes right into your system and then you can even have it, you know, set up to, so that it sends out a campaign automatically. So they're even getting emails or texts before they leave the event, which is super cool. So kiosk mode is super simple. Once you've got your landing page created, just click the kiosk mode link. That'll just pull up the page. And then all it does, instead of sending them to wherever it is that they want to go, when they click the button, their name goes into the system. They get all the emails, campaigns, whatever. And then it refreshes the landing page and makes it empty for the next person. So you can set it up so that you have a little computer at your event there, a little kiosk, whatever. And people can just register. You get a little sign above it. This is, you know, sign up here to win the free gift basket or whatever you're doing for, you know, to get people to sign up. But yeah, it's that simple. Create your landing page, click kiosk mode. If, you know, creating a landing page is super simple. One of the nice little hidden gems here, I'd like to point out two for this is this blank Style 9. Very nice and clean, super easy to work with. I'll show you what it looks like. It's basically a picture or some text over here. So maybe you put a picture of your gift basket, change this headline to win this gift basket or whatever you want to put in there, change the button and then save it. So that's really all you have to do there. When you're done with that, come back over to the list, click kiosk mode at your vendor event and just have that tab open on your browser. So yeah, it's, hopefully that helps.
And you'll see in the training and definitely watch our vendor events video on our YouTube channel. In the, if you, basically if you search our YouTube channel, you type in vendor events, you'll see we have, we have a training on that specifically, maybe even several. But one of the things you do want to make sure that you do, and this actually leads to a question that Shelley just asked, is that when you set up your, your landing page that you will use for kiosk mode for your event, make sure that you are applying a tag to your contact that relates specifically to that vendor event. And you do that by, Greg's showing you right now, by going to settings on the landing page. And when you go to page settings, you are able to use tags to add right here. And so what I like to do, just so it's abundantly clear, is it is, you know, Christmas or, you know, holiday event on, you know, and share the date, right? Holiday event, November 3rd or whatever. And you put that in there. And now, maybe if we can demo real quickly, Greg, if we can save this and enter info, like basically kiosk mode demo this, this landing page. What Shelley is asking is, how do I remember who these people are, right? So how do I make the note of, you know, talked about X issue or lady in the shirt with two kids or wants more info about this particular thing? So let's pretend like Greg is that, you know, lady with two kids here. All right. And then when you hit signup, when Greg hits signup, it's going to refresh back to that same page, right? So now it's ready for the next person. Now, what you get to do when you go to your contact manager.
I guess I didn't put my last name in there, did I?
Actually, if you go to, well, so let's search for the filter. Let's, let's go to filters, actually. So yeah, go to filters and under tags, find the event tag. There you go. And then, you know, because you don't typically have a line of people trying to enter their information right away, all you have to do is go click on this contact. So let's click on the name Greg there. And now over to the right, there's background info. Hit enter, red shirt, interested in pet products, right? Like this is, this is exactly where you would put something like that. So just open up a tab on your browser or do this on your phone. And, you know, and now you're able to do that. You can also add reminders and things like that, too. So there you go. You can add a to-do for yourself and it will show up in your email and remind you to do it.
Yeah, and as you can see, the emails have already gone out here. So yeah.
Very cool.
Set it up to text them. You can even let them know when they sign up, sign up for free text or whatever. You know, you can coordinate that however you'd like.
Fantastic. All right. Great questions today. You guys have any more? Or we want to get going and start setting? Or we want to get going and start setting these up, setting up these, these pages for you to get your people sharing, for you to more easily share different pre-made aspects of your website? Who's going to go put this to use this week? Show of hands. Who's excited to go use this?
Lots of hands.
Uh huh. Good deal. All right. Well, you guys, if that's, if that's it, if you guys don't have any more questions, then by all means, let's go get to work. Ready to sign up for some vendor events? Yes, get it done. This is such a great tool to use for that. I mean, how many of you have, have found yourself with just stacks of, you know, of signup sheets that you just never had? You just haven't gotten around to putting into the system, or just getting back to each one of them? This is how you prevent that from ever happening, and take advantage of every opportunity that exists for you to get those new members. I have Italy and Canada connections. Yeah, so you can use the themes for that too. Uh huh.
Jennifer says I can never read them.
This, this prevents that too.
And Gwen says, actually, I think I'll use this during personal classes too. That's, that's great. Yes.
Yeah, it's a good idea. That's, and that's also, it's a great way just to, to make sure that people are, are being followed up with. So when you have the tag there, you can remember to the next day, maybe apply a follow-up plan to the people who are tagged with that. Just to remind yourself by the end of this week, you know, send out the sample, or give the quick phone call, or whatever the case may be, whatever the follow-up is. So that again, like all that stuff that you invest into doing an event, you know, you're able to, to really maximize. Good deal.
Yes.
Super proud of you guys. All right. Well, yeah, so this, for those of you who are brand new, and that you've never been to one of these before. This is a totally free session that is available to anyone growing a business with Young Living. And if you don't have your own GetOiling account yet, to set up your Leg Builder links for your sharers, your members, and to have these great tools in place for you to go out and make the most of your vendor events and classes, you can head over to getoiling.com right now. Your first, what is, you can get started for a dollar for your first month. And sorry, I'm reading and speaking at the same time. And of course, you have access to these calls every single week where you've got our support, and we will train you on how to use the system to grow your business. Awesome.
Gwen, yeah. Gwen just asked another question, Greg, if you want to demo that. I think I asked this before, but there's not a way to schedule a time for an email to go out in a campaign, correct?
It's pretty funny timing, because actually, we just demoed that last week, just added this feature. It's on, I believe, Premium and Higher Plans, but when you're inside Campaigns, you can now edit the time of day that it sends out. So like, to edit your campaigns, it's under Contact Settings, and then click on Campaigns. You'll get a list of your campaigns. You can always create your new one, create a new one, or copy an existing one. There are some built-in ones. If you want to copy it, you can make your own. When you're inside, let's see, I'll pull up this one here. If you're on the Premium or Higher Plan, you'll see this cool little Advanced Features button here, or link, as well as this over here. So there's two things that go with this. If you click Open Advanced Features, you can see that you can send it at specific times. Now, there's, the little nuance here is that, you know, in the system, we have what's called Day Zero Messages. And those are sent right after people register. Those are a little bit different in that they're not a time of day, because you never know when they're registering, whether it's 2:00 in the morning or 11:59 PM. What this does on Day Zero Messages, it lets, you can now choose, again, Premium or Higher Plans, whether it's sent out right away, and you can time delay. So like in this one, they'll get two messages kind of spaced apart, one by text, one by email. And then on the next day, they'll get one at 5:15 PM Central, whatever the default means, whatever the contact is set up for. So there's a few different options for how it's sent. You can choose the medium as well as the time now. So yeah, you can definitely do that now, if you're on the Premium or Higher Plans. Great way to schedule things to go out at, you know, or get multiple messages per day. You know, depending on the type of campaign, sometimes that's really useful. Like if it's a super time-sensitive thing, and you've got a, let's say it's a Black Friday sale or something, I think that's coming up right around the corner. Who knows what specials will come out this year? But if you, if you are aware of them, you could probably send out, set up a couple of those per day to ping people. So there's all sorts of uses for this. But yeah, you can definitely do that now, Gwen. So thanks for bringing that up.
Fantastic. Yeah, this is such a handy feature to be able to use. And again, that's available in Premium and Higher Plans, and you can start at Premium for a dollar as well for your first month. Give a, give a go at all of these tools, and of course, have our help here to help you get it done. Fantastic. All right. Well, if, if we don't have any other sneak in questions here, we're going to go ahead and let you guys get to work. And we will see you all here next week, same time, for another edition of the weekly work session.
Thanks, everybody. Talk to you later.
Thank you.